I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. Can we have a moment of silence for all our troops to return home and keep that Navy SEAL that just was killed in your prayers? Thank you. Dennis, place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Bellante.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Polos. Freeholder Tomaro. Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. We have some recognitions.
Yes, we have quite a few recognitions tonight. First is recognizing the schools who participated in the McFoods Food Drive. Next is recognizing Michael "Mickey" Gross as he receives the Peter J. Barnes Award. Next is to proclaim May as Older Americans Month in Middlesex County. Next is to proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing the AFL-CIO Labor Council Awards and Scholarship Brunch. And last is recognizing David Woolferton as he attains Eagle Scout status.
Is there a motion to adopt above recognitions?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Bellante, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Tonight, we are going to recognize a lot of schools that have done a wonderful job for McFoods, which is our Middlesex County Soup Kitchen, and where a lot of food is collected. In our network of more than 100 food pantries, soup kitchens, and social service agencies who are providing nutritious foods to county residents in need, it provides agencies with networking opportunities, resource-sharing tools, and nutritional guidelines for clients. McFoods provides agencies in our network with non-perishable foods, fresh bread and fresh produce, dairy and meat products through our warehouse twice a week. The McFoods partners with the Community Food Bank of New Jersey and works with many local businesses, groups, clubs, individuals, and schools who sponsor food drives throughout the year. In 2015, McFoods received and distributed over 1.6 million pounds of food, which is really amazing. The annual Spring School Food Drive is the largest single-food drive to benefit McFoods each year. This year, 120 schools participated and donated over 42 tons of food. These contributions help see us through the summer months when donations fall off. There is a year-round need for food. Several schools and youth organizations hold food drives for us out of the times throughout the year. And tonight, we will recognize some of the top collecting schools from this year's Spring School Food Drive and other youth organizations and schools that held exceptional collections. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Apostel, who does an amazing job.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'd like to start out with recognizing our top collecting school. I'd like to invite the students from the Middlesex County Academy for Science, Math, and Engineering Technology to come up. Okay, I guess they didn't make it. Okay, but the academy was our top collecting school, and through a grade-level competition, they donated 3,250... 3,250 pounds of food. This small collection is extremely civic-minded and has been one of our top collecting schools in each of the 16 years they've participated. If anyone from Colonia High School is here, I'd like to invite you to come up at this Colonia High School donated 3,000 pounds of food, which was actually half of the total amount of donations collected. The other half was donated to a local food pantry. The Interact Club sponsored the drive and ran a competition between homerooms. The winning class earned a trip to see a movie at a local theater. The club raised funds to pay for the trip by bagging groceries. I'd like to invite Christine Sprotola and Jennifer Boss, student council moderators from Malby School, to come up. Malby School in Woodbridge also collected 3,000 pounds of food through their Super Bowl-themed collection. The drive is coordinated by student council. They hold their drive the week before and after the actual Super Bowl. There's a competition between classrooms. The top five classes receive recognition on the loudspeaker, and every student from the top three classrooms receives a spirit stick. The top collecting boy and girl from each class receive a spirit stick as well. Thank you. To round out our top collecting schools this year, there were 12 schools who each raised more than 1,200 pounds of food. Will representatives from St. Helena School in Edison, A.C. Redshaw School in New Brunswick, and Apple Garth School in Monroe please come up? St. Helena School in Edison donated 2,250 pounds of food. They used the Dress Down Day, Pajama Day, Sports Apparel Day, and classroom competitions to generate student enthusiasm. The A.C. Redshaw School in New Brunswick contributed 2,150 pounds of food. The principal encouraged participation through daily announcements and asked everyone to donate something even if it was only one item. The Apple Garth School in Monroe tied their food drive into a March Madness and contributed 2,000 pounds of food. The class with the most donations received extra points in their tournament. Individual class prizes were also arranged by student council representatives and teachers. Will the representatives from the Perthamboy schools please come up? All of these schools in Perthamboy made an effort to engage their students in participating in the food drive by contributing whatever they can. Their school communities responded enthusiastically to support this effort. The AV Series School donated 1,950 pounds. The Robert N. Willand School contributed 1,850 pounds. The Herbert Richardson School raised 1,750 pounds. And the James Flynn School donated 1,650 pounds. And the district as a total raised 9,700 pounds of food. They were second under the Woodbridge School District. Will the representatives from Churchill Junior High and Monroe Township Middle School come Churchill Junior High collected 1,650 pounds of food. The student council was instrumental in rallying the student body to participate. They held a competition between classes, and the winning class earned a party to celebrate their efforts. The Monroe Township Middle School donated 1,550 pounds of food. The Builders Club sponsored the drive, and they offered a pizza party to the class that had the highest pounds-to-student ratio. Students from the club are very involved in promoting the drive within the school and collecting and packing up the donations. Will representatives from the Truman School in Sayerville, Randolph School in Piscataway, and the Mill Lake School in Monroe please come up? Harriet Truman School in Sayerville donated 1,500 pounds of food. They promoted their drive through daily TV news and on the school Facebook page. They also had grade-level competitions with extra recess as an incentive. A bar graph in the foyer displayed which grade level was currently in the lead. The Randolphville School in Piscataway donated 1,450 pounds. They kept tallies per class and made weekly announcements regarding which classes were in the lead. The top-earning classrooms received extra recess, Pajama Day, and free seating in the The Mill Lake School in Monroe donated 1,400 pounds of food. They promote their drive through the principal's newsletter, posters around the school. Staff members received an email and flyer promoting the drive. There are end-of-day announcement reminders made with an estimate of how much food's been collected to that point. The student council members also went to each class to speak briefly about the drive. Will the representatives from Chittick School in East Brunswick, Carteret Middle School, and Parkview School in Milltown please come up? Chittick School in East Brunswick donated 1,800 pounds of food. The Carteret Middle School also donated 1,800 pounds of food. And the Parkview School in Milltown donated 1,600 pounds of food. These schools held multiple food drives, one in the fall and along with the one in Several schools and youth organizations held significant collections for McFoods throughout the year last year that we'd like to recognize. I'd like to invite the cadets from the Old Bridge High School Junior ROTC program to come up. Over 100 cadets participated in their food drive this past November. They partnered with several local retailers to collect food throughout the community. In all, over 200 McFoods bins were filled with food from their extraordinary efforts. That's 10,000 pounds of food. This is the second year the group donated to us. In 2014, we received 8,550 pounds of food from their collection. I'd like to invite the East Brunswick Scouts and their leaders to come up. The East Brunswick Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, and Crews from Troops 132 and 223 held a food drive outside several local grocery stores on November 7th and 8th. Through their efforts, they donated 4,800 pounds of food and over $500 in monetary contributions. Will Principal Paragallo and Mrs. Lewandowski from Matatchan High School please come up? Matatchan High School has held multiple food drives each year for the last 18 years. They have been steady supporters of our program. This year, they had two fall collections that generated 3,200 pounds of food. They're currently running another collection right now. Their food drives are promoted with flyers, announcements, and their electronic billboard outside the school. The principal and teachers speak about the drive often, and some teachers offer extra credit as an incentive. They encourage the community to bring food to athletic and musical events, and the student council members help spread the word and held a grade-level competition under the guidance of Mrs. Lewandowski. Thank you. Will Coach Mallars and Timmy Goodzak from the East Brunswick High School Football Team please come up? East Brunswick High School Football Team holds an annual food drive for McFoods in July. The timing of their collection is critical for the McFoods program, as the summer is the most difficult time of year to keep our shelves stocked. The team members pass out flyers and bags in their neighborhoods. The flyer indicates when the boys will be back in the neighborhood to pick up their contribution. All donations received from the community are brought back to the locker room for pickup by McFoods. This is the third year the team sponsored this food drive for us. This year's drive was coordinated by Timmy and Coach Mallars. Will Jennifer Stetson from the East Brunswick Recreation Department and the members of the East Brunswick Youth Council come up, please? East Brunswick Youth Council has been a tremendous supporter of McFoods. They've held multiple food drives every year for the last 15 years. Members collect food and money outside the Acme in Milltown several times each year. This year's collections from September through April generated 2,500 pounds of food and over $700 in monetary contributions. Members also volunteer each October for the Monroe Fall Harvest Food Drive, passing out bags and flyers to residents in the adult communities. This volunteer effort is also a very important project that helps us promote the food drive that usually generates five to seven tons of food. If anyone is here from the Irwin School and the Hammerstone Schools in East Brunswick, please come up. Well, the Irwin School has held 11 spring food drives and 10 fall food drives for us. This year, 3,200 pounds of food was donated through both drives. The school nurse, Mrs. Ladman, is very passionate about holding these food drives. She spends time with the students at lunch talking about donations and how important the food banks are to the community, and encourages them to participate by bringing in anything they can. And the Hammerstone School in East Brunswick has held six spring school food drives and five fall food drives. This past fall, they donated 1,500 pounds of food. This wraps up our recognitions for this evening. I'd like to offer a final thank you to everyone who supports the McFoods program. This program has a major impact on the lives of so many Middlesex County residents. We're not only providing food, the most basic of needs, but we are providing encouragement and support to those who need it most. Many pantries in our network offer additional services, including clothing, rent or utility assistance, and referrals to other social service programs. Through the McFoods network, our agencies are collaborating together to share information and resources and most effectively and efficiently meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. So in closing, I thank all the volunteers who worked tirelessly to provide these much-needed resources, and to all those in our community who give so generously to help us ensure Middlesex County residents have access to nutritious foods and necessities at all times. To stay informed about McFoods and our partner agencies, please like and follow us on our social media accounts, on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Thank you.
I would also like to thank everyone for participating in the McFoods program and for Jennifer Apostel and all her staff for working hand-in-hand with all the organizations and all the schools that put this together. I would like to ask right now if we can get everybody up here for a group picture, and then we'll spare you the expense of staying for our meeting, and then you can take it if you'd like.
That'll work.
Okay. You gotta keep backing up. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, the students from the Middlesex County Academy arrived a little late, so we're just giving them their certificate right now. office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk or the board for reference. Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Bellante, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Minutes for approval.
The Board of Chosen Freeholders' meeting, regular meeting, April 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Bellante, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. At this time, we're going to go to freeholder reports. Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Office of Workforce Development, the annual Spring Job Fair will be held on Thursday, May 12th, at Middlesex County College from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The registered job fair employers are available on the county website, search "Job Fair." From the Office of Culture and Heritage, Folk Dances of Peru, Saturday, May 14th, at 3:00 PM, Middlesex County College Performing Arts Center, 2600 Woodbridge Avenue, Edison. Folklorico imagines y tradiciones del Peru. I got through that.
You're doing good. It's bilingual.
Just for the record, I made it through. Folk dancers will perform dances from three indigenous regions of Peru, free of charge. Registration required at 732-745-4489. And to all of those mothers out there, please have a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Deputy Director Bellante.
No report this evening.
Freeholder Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director, for the Department of Community Services. Each May, Middlesex County joins other organizations across the country in recognizing the contributions of older people by celebrating Older Americans Month. The annual observance provides the opportunity to learn about, support, and celebrate our nation's older citizens. This year's theme, "Blaze a Trail," emphasizes the ways older adults are reinventing themselves through new work and new passions, engaging their communities, and blazing a trail of positive impact on the lives of people of all ages. I look forward to meeting many of our older residents at one of the four upcoming 90's birthday bashes that our Office of Aging and Disabled Services is coordinating to commemorate the month. And from our Office of Human Services, tonight's agenda includes resolutions authorizing the submission of three grant agreements with HUD. The programs funded under this plan will bring a total of $2.9 million into Middlesex County for projects benefiting low-income people, the elderly, the disabled, and the homeless. Examples of projects are municipal improvements to parks and streets, improvements of senior centers and programs, services and transportation for senior citizens and disabled persons, improvements of public facilities, and installing ADA-accessible curb cuts. It will also provide for new affordable housing for our residents through acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, and a first-time homebuyers program. And that's my report, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Valente. Okay, Mr. Kelso, are there any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Freeholder Director, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Charles Cradaville. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper here in New Brunswick. I wanted to ask about 676 is an agreement with the Cultural Center. It's an amendment to the lease. And there's this new entity, the State Regional Arts Center at New Brunswick, Inc. Can you tell me who's involved in that entity and what is this amendment?
Yes. Mr. Kelso?
Yes, the State Theater Regional Arts Center of Brunswick is not a new organization. It's existed since 2002. It's the actual organization that's operating the State Theater currently. The reason for the two documents is that there has been an agreement, a sublease agreement reached between the New Brunswick Cultural Center, which is the holder of the master lease with the county in Middlesex since 1988, in order to permit the State Theater Regional Arts Center to operate independently in operating the theater, which they do today. The sublease requires certain documents that the county needs to execute in order to consummate that transaction. The first is a First Amendment to the lease, which acknowledges the sublease and provides certain representations that the current lease is in good standing, and certain representations that there are no liens on the premises, things of that nature. It also reaffirms certain provisions of the 1988 lease, which calls for the county's utilization of the building in their discretion, such as when they do the Joseph Amazing Technicolor Dream Coat in December. So it's really two fairly minor documents that the county has to acknowledge in order for the sublease to go into effect between the Cultural Center and the State Theater.
Okay, and can you just be clear about what's the purpose of the sublease? Is this related to the project that's planned for that block?
It's somewhat related, but by and large, it's to recognize what de facto has been occurring over the last number of years, which is the State Theater, as an independent organization, has been operating through a direct lease agreement with the New Brunswick Cultural Center to operate. This is a fallout from 1999 to 2002, when both organizations were really one organization, and there was a determination made to split the organization so the New Brunswick Cultural Center could be more a strategic planning organization and the State Theater could strictly operate the State Theater. And now we're memorializing those documents now that there's been an agreement reached on a long-term sublease.
Thank you. I'll move on to 682. Why is the county going to pay the MCIA 1.49 million dollars?
Those are going to be for upgrades to the recreational improvements to the golf courses that we're doing over there. It's been a past practice that we do when we see that there's a need for upgrades and improvements, and we're doing that out of the open space fund.
Okay, and can you tell me the last time that was done? Did the county put up money for this?
That's... I don't know. for the sublease to go into effect between the Cultural Center and the State Theater.
Okay. And just, can you just be clear about what's the purpose of the sublease? Is this related to the project that's planned for that?
It's somewhat related, but by and large, it's to recognize what de facto has been occurring over the last number of years, which is the State Theater, as an independent organization, has been operating through a direct lease agreement with the New Brunswick Cultural Center to operate. This is a fallout from 1999 to 2002, when both organizations were really one organization, and there was a determination made to split the organization so the New Brunswick Cultural Center could be more a strategic planning organization and the State Theater could strictly operate the State Theater. And now we're memorializing those documents now that there's been an agreement reached on a long-term sublease.
Thank you. I'll move on to 682. Why is the county going to pay the MCIA $1.49 million?
Those are going to be for upgrades to the recreational improvements to the golf courses that we're doing over there. It's been a past practice that we do when we see that there's a need for upgrades and improvements, and that's, we're doing that out of the open space fund.
Okay. And can you tell me the last time that was done? Did the county put up money for this?
That's, I don't know if we can do that.
About six years ago.
Okay. Is there any reason it's being done now? I know the MCIA is going through a transition, right?
Yes.
It's one of the things that we've been working on, myself and Ralph Albiner, is we've been looking at the three golf courses and the significant improvements that need be made to both the facilities, the infrastructure themselves, also the useful life of the golf carts has exceeded its ability. As a result, maybe the golf carts only get through 18 holes. So a portion of that is for new golf carts, a portion's for new equipment to cut the grass and maintain the facilities, and also improvements to the kitchen area, the dining area, as well as the golf course itself. We've been removing and enhancing all of the traps, the trees, the trees, and unfortunately, that's been ignored for about two or three years. So now we're trying to catch up to address those concerns.
Gotcha. The last one I want to ask about is 684, and I actually want to, you know, suggest that the board not pass this tonight. Bottled water from Nestle. I would say that if there's no contamination issues with the county's buildings, I don't see why the county would need to spend $20,000 on bottled water throughout the course of the year. Maybe there's something, I don't know, but I think that consumer confidence in the water is an important thing, and when the county is spending-
That's fine.
-money on bottled water, it doesn't inspire confidence in the quality of the water. So could you please address that?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Could you please just address my point?
Your question, you said you urged us not to pass the resolution. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yes. Ernest Doakes from Matachun. I had a question on 426. It says various improvements in equipment. What kind of equipment is that?
Which resolution, sir? I'm sorry.
Ordinance 426.
He has a question with regard to the ordinances. We're not dealing with the ordinances now.
At this time, we're not dealing with the ordinances. We're dealing with just resolutions. If we get to that part of the meeting where we're able to have a vote for the ordinances, then we'll be able to answer your question at that time.
The one on parking spaces for Perth Bay Amboy, who's using those spaces in Perth Bay Amboy?
Those are for our probation offices that are over there and for the people that have to go there. That's what we pay for those parking spaces there to the city of Perth Bay Amboy.
And also, all these things that are on, you know, the agenda tonight, I was not able to find it on the website ahead of time. Is there a reason why they don't post those on the website?
It was on the website.
It should have been on the website.
It was on the website on Wednesday.
And also, there's a number of links that are not working. I don't know who does that or who tested it.
They haven't been.
If you'd like, at the end of the meeting, we'll be able to have our IT director.
Okay. And the one last thing, the reverse commuting costs, where are those?
Which resolution is that? Byla, could you answer that, please?
It's matching funds, round three, matching funds of?
This is a grant we received from New Jersey Transit, and it's used to fund the M1 shuttle, which is the New Brunswick to James Park and the A shuttle.
So why don't they just list that on the... I mean, like, when you try to look any of these things up on the website, you know, there's no details or... All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close?
Uh-oh.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, Mr. Kelso?
First, I don't believe there's anyone that has a resolution to remove from the agenda. If not, then Freeholder Director, a motion would be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 16-670 through 16-786.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Ballante?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. At this time, we're going to go through the public portion on any items listed. We didn't go through the ordinances yet because we only have four members here, and we need five for a vote. We don't have five before the public portion is over. Then what we'll do is make a motion and a second and a vote to table it until the next meeting in May. So at this time, I'm going to just do a little reverse in the meeting and have the public portion, if anyone has any questions. Anyone have any questions? Or comments? You have, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charles Cradaville. Point of order, I want to understand, what is the floor open for? Comments on what?
On anything right now, because-
Anything at all?
Anything at all.
Okay.
Right. We're just switching around the agenda here because we don't have five members present.
Okay. Well, I would-
If the fifth member arrives, then we will have the ordinances, the public hearings on them, and then we'll vote, and then we'll motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So I did want to ask about a resolution, actually, that I believe just got passed. 756R is awarding a contract to the Puerto Rican Action Board. I believe we established at a prior meeting that a couple of members of this board are also board members of the Puerto Rican Action Board. So I'd like to suggest that those board members might want to rethink their vote on That would be a violation of the local government ethics law, no?
756?
I think, Mr. Cradaville, you're probably correct. I think it got missed in the review, so that I believe what we would actually want to do in this situation with four members is to remove the Prab resolution 756 from the consent agenda, revote the consent agenda, and carry the 756 to the next meeting. So I think the first motion in order would be to-
We have to close the public portion and then go back to that part and then-
Right. We'd do it after-
We'll do that after the public portion.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to address ethics during my, you know, public comment tonight. I know that the county ethics board only has, I believe, two meetings a year, and I wanted to ask if there's any update from the ethics board on the complaint that I filed. I guess it was early this year, or maybe even December.
I think you'd have to direct the question to the ethics board.
They haven't addressed the matter. They haven't had a special meeting without me?
They haven't had a-
Okay. I want to ask, are there employees who work for the prosecutor's office who are confidential employees?
I would imagine that there are confidential employees, but that would be probably better answered by the prosecutor himself, but I'm going to assume that they have confidential employees, yes.
Okay. And can you identify those employees? I mean, it's not a secret, their identities, the point of being a confidential employee deals with compliance with a certain statute. I'm sorry, I don't have the citation, but confidential employees under the local government ethics law are required to file financial disclosure forms. So are there any employees at the prosecutor's office who are required to file financial disclosure forms besides the prosecutor himself?
I can't answer that because I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Kelso might-
I believe the answer to that is yes. There are multiple employees that are required to do it. I just don't have a list of who they are.
But so like, first assistant prosecutor would be one?
Like, I can't say that for certain, but I'm sure there are members of the prosecutor's office that do file.
Okay. And the freeholders also have confidential employees, correct?
I don't.
The freeholders have a freeholder's aide, a secretary to the freeholder, four hundred employees, and they have to do a financial disclosure.
I'm sorry, you don't believe or you-
I don't believe they would do a financial disclosure. You know, it's like a federal position.
But isn't the way it works that if you're a confidential employee, you have to file a financial disclosure?
Their title is secretary to the freeholder or a freeholder's aide, not a confidential
The filing, Charlie, is based upon their actual title.
Okay. And so you're saying that their actual title is not a confidential position, the freeholders' aides?
No. We have our freeholders' aides down as a freeholder's aide title or a secretary to the freeholder.
Okay.
There are only other titles that are confidential, confidential assistant or confidential employee. They don't apply to the secretary or clerical staff. It could be a confidential secretary, but that's not the title of the freeholder.
Right. But just because the word confidential is not in the title doesn't mean it's not confidential under the statute.
That's fine.
If I may, could I have just a little more time to explore these issues?
Time is up.
Respectfully, sir-
Anyone else in the public?
Respectfully, sir, the Middlesex County is violating ethics here, and you just don't want to hear it.
Ernest Doakes, resident of Matachun. I had a question. When someone like wanted to get the minutes for the meetings, which are not available online, would they need to make an Oprah request?
Yes.
Are you aware that the Oprah request form on the internet is broken and not working properly?
It's an electronic form.
Okay. But are you aware that does not work?
It should be working. We've been getting requests all week.
Well, I've tried to make requests, and the website is not working. So just to let you know, if you'd... And also, the design of the website, you know, is very hard to find links. And also, the, like, the agenda for each meeting is usually not available that much, that much time ahead of time. Is there a reason for that, or?
The agenda is usually out by Tuesday, three days before the-
Wednesday morning.
Either Monday or Tuesday.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning, the latest before the meeting.
Because I tried to look at it this week, and I was not able to. Now, can those minutes from, you know, like, for example, the meetings from two years ago, can those minutes be posted online, or?
That's up to you.
Let me ask Sylvia, are they? I don't think we have the minutes posted.
The minutes are not posted.
Is there a reason why that can't be done, or? Because I mean, on the county website in general, you know, there's a lot of information missing.
Are you using the search feature when you're loading?
Yeah, I've done that, but the search is very inefficient, you know, and it's hard to look stuff.
So if you click the request and you go, or you do the search, and you find out it's on a computer, you can see there's a call, and it's in the state if we're receiving requests.
We've seen them all day.
Well, when I tried to make the request, there was a issue, like, I put in my last name, and then it kept going back till you had to enter your last name. So like, when you're trying to put, you know, on each line, it's not, you know, when you put in that information, it doesn't seem to... Now, also, the agenda meeting that's held an hour before this meeting, is there a reason why that can't be televised, or?
It's a workshop meeting, and things can be changed between the agenda meeting and the regular meeting. So this way, the regular meeting is televised where we have public input and people can make their comments.
Okay. Well, it's very hard for the public to make, you know, like, some of these things say it's going to be the final reading, and I know there was, you know, there was a decision made about the county landfill, and there was not much advance notice of that. Thank you.
There was plenty of advance notice for the public hearing on the landfill.
Are those details available online? Because I was not able to find it.
Yes. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion? Is there a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have to go back to the consent agenda for the resolutions.
The first vote that I would recommend to the board would be to void the previous vote on the consent agenda.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Ballante?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
The second vote that I would recommend to the board would be now to vote to hold resolutions 16-756.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Ballante?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Now, Freeholder Director, it would be appropriate to reconsider the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 16-670 through 16-786, excluding resolution 16-756 to be held.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Ballante?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Okay. At this time-
I can definitely ask you for some time.
No, that's quite all right, Mr. Cradaville.
That was kind.
Very kind of you. At this time, we're going to have to make a motion to table the ordinances until the next meeting.
Yes. Freeholder Director, I would recommend a motion to hold ordinances number 426, 427, 428, and 429 until the May 19th regular meeting, and further to authorize a public hearing to be held on those four ordinance on that date, May 19th, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Ballante?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Ballante. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.